Summer evening, but it is cool in here, so that's a good thing. All right. First, we're going to go on to public comments, scheduled and non-scheduled presentations. Are there any public comments? Brian, is there anything out there?
There are no callers for public comment.
Okay. So next, we're going to go into a consideration of city council applicant applications. As many people know or do not know, council, former council member Dean Bavacqua resigned the council at the last meeting after his years of service. And we opened it up for people to apply for the open council position. I want to thank all the people who put in for it. We had six people who have applied. Appreciate their wanting to serve the city. Appreciate them getting into the mix of city government and wanting to serve. And I think we're all grateful for people getting involved and for them putting themselves out. As we've said in the past, Rochester has an embarrassment of riches, and a lot of the candidates here have incredible, incredible personal backgrounds, business backgrounds, service of the city. Again, so a lot of these candidates would be what would be good candidates. Excuse me. I have been through this a couple of times before, and it is more complicated than you think. And I think this one is especially complicated because it's so close to the election. So we have offered all the candidates an opportunity to speak, to give brief remarks tonight. You do not have to give brief remarks if you don't choose, but if you choose to, you can. So council, any questions before we get started on that, on the procedure or anything? So we'll have them come up here and speak, kind of introduce yourself, you know, address. And then I guess if council has questions at the end of their presentation, you can ask questions or not ask questions. So we are going to do this alphabetically. So the first person up is Debbie Allen. So Debbie, welcome.
Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak. My name is Debbie Allen. I'm at 668 North Main Street, apartment 202, Rochester, Michigan. I moved to Rochester about 18 years ago with my daughter. I'm a single mother after working at the Rochester Community Schools Foundation. I couldn't ask for a better community to raise my daughter or a better school system to have my daughter in. Fabulous, just couldn't believe it. I'm seeking a spot on the council because I have the time now, she's 22, graduated in college one more year to go, thank you, to give back to the community that allowed me as a single mother to raise a daughter in such a great environment. The programs that they have throughout Rochester and throughout the schools meant the world to me, being a single mother and so flexible. I work in sales. I have worked from home for the past year during COVID. I worked the entire time. Ascension Hospital is one of my clients and a couple other hospitals, and they needed signs. I'm in printing, but I do most of my work from home, which means I have a lot of time to devote to this. I've taken the opportunity to go through the comments from the survey, from the internship when she did it, and all the comments. I've read them, most of them, and some of them I'd like to look into as a council member and even not as a council member to see how we can improve it. I was so happy at the meeting that there's a dog park in consideration, that somebody had emailed about that because it is something that would be nice instead of going to Lake Orion and spending money, spend it here. Something in there. I believe that I will be fair as far as anything. I am a delegate in the 8th district, so as far as events and everything else, I do go to plenty of them. And I'm learning very fast. I'm a very fast learner. But I'd like to give back to the community that gave me so much. Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, council? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Doug Gould. Doug Gould was not able to attend the meeting today, but he did send a video. So Brian?
Are you able to see it?
Yes. Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, council members, city manager, man of clerk, department heads. I very much appreciate the opportunity to share my desire to fill the recently vacated seat with you via this recorded message. I will be brief. I'd like to start by apologizing for not being able to attend this important meeting and want to assure you that my lack of attendance is not in any way an indication of a lack of desire or a lack of commitment to join city council. Rather, my wife and I are away on a long planned vacation, and I'm unable to participate synchronously during the time that this meeting is being held. I know that you all have my contact information, and I invite each of you to contact me at any time. As evidence of my commitment to the city, I ran, albeit unsuccessfully, for city council in 2019. I lost by 68 votes. After that loss, I have remained committed and stayed involved. I chaired the compensation committee and accepted appointments on OPEB and am secretary of the governing board of the OBC. I truly believe that we must serve the various communities in which we operate, whether that is our family, our work, or our neighborhood. They all take deliberate work to make them better and help those around us. I've established good relationships with most members of the city council, and I believe you know me to be a good and reasonable person. I serve alongside many of you on various committees and events, and I'd like to think I have earned your trust. For me, being on Rochester City Council has nothing to do with serving as a stepping stone to the next more prestigious county or state office. This is not a temporary stopover on my way elsewhere. This is my family's home, and I'm obliged to serve them and the city. Regardless of who you vote for to fill the vacant seat, I will remain committed to helping our city and to keeping it a great place to live and raise a family, start a business, seek an education, to recreate and just enjoy life. I urge Rochester City Council to consider placing me in the vacant seat. Our citizens deserve a person committed to working hard for our city. I put my name forward and put in the work to get on the November ballot, even when facing four strong and popular incumbent candidates. Finally, I think it's worth pointing out that almost 1,000 of our fellow citizens supported me in the last election. I believe it is honoring their wishes that I'm appointed to the open seat. In closing, I hope I've earned your support and your trust, and I'm eager to get even more involved in this great city of ours. Thank you for your time, and have a good night.
Thank you. I was about to say, are there any questions for him? It was so, it was so clear, or it felt like he was, felt like he was there. Okay, next, we have Christian Hauser. Christian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Christian Hauser. I live at 515 Seventh Street. And as the agenda references, I've submitted my name for consideration to fill the temporary vacancy left by Mr. Bavacqua. By way of background, my family and I have lived in Rochester for approximately 20 years. I'm currently the, a member in the Rochester Planning Commission and the chairperson of the Groundfield Redevelopment Authority. I've also served on the DDA and the Sustainable Rochester Steering Committee. Finally, I'm helping Mr. Alan Smith with fundraising objectives for the Rochester Community House. Professionally, I'm a licensed attorney, practicing primarily in construction law. I also serve as an arbitrator and mediator in construction and civil-related litigation disputes. I'm a licensed builder, and my undergraduate degree is in business administration. Personally, I feel qualified and well-suited for this position as follows. My involvement on other commissions and boards has provided me with the experience on the rules and the procedures to efficiently and quickly learn the process of city council. I don't believe there will be a strong learning curve, and I don't believe there's going to be any interruption in services from the city council to the city with an appointment of myself. I'm very familiar with the rules and the processes, and again, I believe I would be able to participate immediately. Second, I'm not running for city council or any other position in the state. And not to take anything away from the other residents who are before you this evening, but to maintain neutrality and to avoid any inference of bias or endorsement, I contend that the individual chosen for this position ought not to be someone who is on the ballot this fall. Third, probably the most important, is I'm committed to the process and the role of city government, and in particular, the concept that the opinion of every resident matters. What may seem trivial to me may have a significant consequence to someone else. City government from the top to the bottom should strive to make certain that residents' concerns are addressed timely and responsibly, and that everyone feels as though they are being recognized. No one should be dismissed of their particular issue, their opinion, or their grievance. Everyone that comes before city council ought to be treated fairly and equally with no bias whatsoever. Fourth, my professional background, along with my experience on the other boards and commissions, has prepared me well to deal with differences of opinion. I'm not naive to think that there will always be consensus on all issues. However, it is critical that opposing views be debated with respect, maturity, and at all times civility and respect. And finally, I'm putting my name in for consideration because I sincerely care about this city. As a resident, property owner, and taxpayer, I clearly have a personal interest in Rochester's success. I'm prepared to invest my own tongue and my own resources towards a city that I sincerely believe is one of the finest in the state. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to all of you this evening, and I hope that you strongly consider me to fill the temporary city council position that I know ends on November 3rd. With that said, I'm happy to answer any questions that any one of you may have.
Councilmember Robert.
Hey, Christian.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Thanks for coming out tonight. I was, I had to reach out to Christie because it's, I held a position on DDA, and I, it was probably after my time there and before tonight. You were only on there for a short period of time. Why did you leave? Was it for the planning commission, and could you have done both?
Sure. That's a, that's a good question. So I had applied for the planning commission initially. It was selected, or the mayor had selected someone else, and they offered me the opportunity to go on the DDA because there was an opening, and I wanted to serve in some capacity, didn't necessarily have to be the planning, although admittedly, that was my first objective. I did the DDA, and it was an interesting time because I think when I was appointed, it was April, right when COVID hit. And, you know, what should have, I was told was going to be a fantastic opportunity on the DDA turned into crisis mode. And so I quickly had to jump in and learn about all the inner workings of the city. And then I believe in the summer, towards the end of the summer, probably about this time last year, an opening came up on the planning commission. And again, that's, you know, my background professionally, construction, everything like that, it seemed like a very thing, opportunity, so I resubmitted, and I was appointed. And that's, that's why I switched. I did not quit the DDA because I didn't like it. It was rather, that was my goal always was to be on the planning commission.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you. My question might be for LeAnn, actually. Would he need to resign from planning commission in order to take this position?
I, we have discussed this with Attorney Pratt, and council did recently adopt a resolution that council members could not serve as a resident on a board. So he would have to resign if he were appointed as a city council member.
And I recognize it. I, listen, I, I have delivered, and Ms. O'Connor can certainly understand, I've corresponded with her a couple of times on that issue, and it was something that I did not take lightly. And I recognize I might be going from the pain into the fire, you know, in a short time, but listen, I'm committed to it, and that's the decision I've made, and I'm at peace with it. So if that's the process, hey, I know the rules, you know? No one can say I didn't understand the process, and I didn't, you know, have my eyes fully wide open.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Next, we have Brendan Johnson. Brendan?
Is there a camera out here, or should I make eye contact with that camera? Or is anyone online right now?
Dustin, with, with the audience here.
I'll just gaze around the room.
There you go.
That'll be that. Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me. Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the council, thank you very much for including me in this process and for opening the process up to the entire city and any interested resident for application to this seat. A good friend of Dean, or Councilman Bavacqua's, and I was sad to hear his departure, but I certainly wish him well with the next chapter of his life. Now, with him moving on to the next chapter of his life, that obviously means that we need to be moving on with the next chapter of ours. Not that they're entirely one and the same, but every person in this small town makes a huge impact on the small town, and that's something that I firmly believe in. Rochester's been my hometown since I was born. I didn't expect to be competing with numbers, but since everyone's throwing a number, 27. I've lived in the area for 27 years. Pleased to have been brought here by the birth from my mother, but there is no better hometown, I believe, not that I'm biased, in the entire United States. This is the perfect hometown. And while I have lived in each Rochester Hills, Oakland Township, and the city of Rochester, I firmly believe that Rochester is just a magical place. There's nothing like my religious, almost, practice of riding my bike down the Paint Creek Trail every Saturday morning to get to the farmer's market, to browse around, grab a scone and a cup of coffee, to spend hour upon hour upon hour practicing piano at the Rochester Conservatory of Music. I have bled on those keys. And to heralding in fall at the Arts and Apples Festival, heralding in winter at Lanyard. Truly, this is a magical place to live. And it is so full of wonderful amenities, a wonderful school system, absolutely. I was certainly enabled by that school system to leap into a wonderful career at Michigan State. I studied international relations. I got my master's degree at Georgetown in foreign service. I thought that I'd be doing diplomacy, but there's so much work in diplomacy at the grassroots level that has to happen in our hometowns. So I moved back from Washington, DC to Rochester, my hometown, and I was really sad to find that none. I just told LeAnn, my last high school friend moved out of Rochester two months ago. She moved to Idaho of all places.
Of course.
Yep. Because Idaho, it's very pretty. It's very pretty. But that is a problem. And, and as a member of the generation that is infamous for doing that, it's a huge problem that we're going to have to reckon with. I am firmly of the belief that we need members of my generation to take that step back to our hometowns. It's not just where our parents live. These are really important cities that we need to be investing in. I'm at the point in my life where I am building my own master plan. I know we're all deeply involved in editing the city's master plan. I need to think of where I want to live, where I want to spend the rest of my life, where I want to build a family, where my kids want to go to school. I want that to be in the best city in the world, and I want to do it in Rochester. Wouldn't I want those two things to be exactly the same? And in that way, I think that the city's priorities and my personal priorities are one and the same, and I'd love to commit my own life to achieving that here. Now, I am not on the ballot. I love all of you, really, and why run against anyone that you actually enjoy serving you on, on council? But with Councilman Bavacqua's passing, no, sorry, not passing. Poor choice of words, with his transitioning to a different city. I, I thought, why not? Why not add my voice to the table? I think I have quite a bit of energy to bring to local governance. I have worked at the federal level. I served in Congresswoman Slotkin's staff. I'm a national security person by trade. I currently work at the state level, and I've talked with all of you about the issues that affect our city and the issues that affect our constituents. They are at every level of governance, right? And at the city level, that's where the most important human-to-government reactions happen, right? What is government? How does government work for me? And how can we be part of a society together? I, I will stop myself there because I think I could just give a TED Talk at this point, but I look forward to your questions. And again, thank you so much for this opportunity.
Counsel? Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Brendan. Next, we have Rich, who according to the clerk is going to have a... Yeah, a, well, do you want to come up and?
Yeah.
Okay. Just introduce yourself to everybody.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Hello, everyone. My name is Rich Kenjuk, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to apply for the vacant position. Next slide, please. Tell you a little bit about myself. I've been a resident of Rochester for almost 19 years. I have two boys that graduated from Stony Creek High School, one in 2008, one in 2010. And then in my career, I've worked for some very small businesses, medium-sized businesses, and large businesses. And at the end of my business career, I had my own business and successfully ran it for over 10 years. Throughout that time, I've given back to the community. I've spent almost 20 years working in, in various, or, or being part of a couple of different homeowners associations. I lived in Troy prior to moving to Rochester. There, I was president of the Crescent Park, Crescent Ridge Homeowners Association for eight years, and then I, when I moved to Troy, or I'm sorry, moved to Rochester, you know, I joined the board, and then for the last 10 years, I've been in charge of the landscaping and infrastructure committee. Next slide, please. I live in Stony Creek Ridge, and that's over on the east side of town. There are 465 homes with about 1,600 residents. I'm guessing we're roughly about 12% of the size of, or we have 12% of the population of Rochester. As a member of the board, there's a number of things that we do in our community, and as one council person told me, he likes to think of Rochester as being a rather large homeowners association. I like to think of us as being a city within a city. And there's a number of things you can see up on the list that we take care of, and, and we do our best, you know, to, to, you know, make it a very desirable community to live in. Next slide, please. I want to take a couple of minutes and talk about some accomplishments that I'm rather proud of, things that we achieved. My budget for this year is actually 10% less than it was, what it was when we started, when I joined or took over the landscape committee 10 years ago. And in addition, we actually provide more services than we did before, so we truly are doing more with less. One thing I'm rather proud of is that during that timeframe, I've never exceeded my budget. I've always been under. The largest project we undertook, we started back in about 2014 because we saw an opportunity to save some money in the long run and, and lower our overall operating costs. And what we did was we converted 227 streetlights to LEDs. And at that time, our bill was roughly $30,000 a year. We cut it to 10. When we were doing our research, we forecasted that we would cut energy usage by 68%. We continue to monitor that to this day, and we have, in fact, cut it 68%. Starting in year six, which will be in October, the city of Rochester will also start to save $10,000 annually as part of our cost-sharing agreement. In 2012, when I first took over the landscape committee, we ran into a major problem. We actually had our largest water bill ever. We spent over $30,000 to water the grass, and that was despite the fact we had a company that was supposed to manage that for us. Well, to make a long story short, we got rid of them, and we took over ourselves, and we monitor it rather aggressively. We literally have cut our water usage on average by 58% every year since then. Another accomplishment, in 2018, we noticed that the trees in our, our community were struggling. We did a survey of the trees along the major roads. We're bounded by Parkdale, Runyon, and Dequinder, and we also took a look at those in the cul-de-sacs around the sub and found that about 25% of them were diseased or infested with bugs. So we sought out the help of a consultant. We developed a plan. We implemented that plan, and we're now three years into it, and I can honestly say that our trees look better than they have in a long time. And then finally, to address a problem that's been probably one of our longest-running and most chronic, is speeding through our subdivision. That just seems to be a complaint we hear every year from our residents. And unfortunately, last year, there was a fatal traffic accident at Wingate and Parkdale, which is the entrance to our subdivision. So with the help of Chief Shuttlehome and also Blaine, we are implementing some changes this year where we're actually putting in more stop signs in our, or I'm sorry, speed limit signs in our subdivision. We've already put some warning signs on Runyon and lowered the speed limit to 30 miles an hour from the, from the roundabout to our entrance. And we also changed some signage over on Parkdale. Further on, later this year, it's my understanding they're going to add right turn lanes to the entrance on Runyon, and we're investigating the addition of some radar speed limit signs within our subdivision. Next slide, please. So, limey. Well, hopefully, in these last few minutes, I've been able to demonstrate that I've got a well breadth of, a wide breadth of experience in both business and civil service. At the risk of dropping names, I've, I've worked with, over the last 10 years, I've worked with two city managers, four DPW directors, the police chief, the city attorney, and a couple of finance directors. And most recently, I've been part of the tree committee with council members Albrecht and Selvia, and also I'm part of the master steering committee. I'm on the housing committee and the community sustainability committee, and I've had the honor of working with Stuart Bixson. So in conclusion, I appreciate the opportunity. I want to emphasize that because of my experience and my interactions with a number of people in city administration, that I should be able to hit the ground running on the very first day. Any questions?
Very good. Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Terry Tesh.
My last? I thought I was going to be last. I wouldn't mind waiting a few more minutes.
Last, but not least.
Well, I'm Terry Tesh. I'm 79 years old. I retired last year from Ford Motor Co., Neil, as a journeyman machinery repairman. I've lived in Rochester since 1995. I'm a homeowner. I remember a little over 20 years ago, my late wife and I came in here, and we were going to remodel our home and put a second story on it, and my wife wanted a porch. Well, we needed a variance to, to build our porch because it would be too close to the street. And we came in, and I was so surprised that a whole bunch of our neighbors came in to support us and tell the council that they thought that it would be a benefit to the city. But what really impressed me was the council itself. I thought, what a nice bunch of people. They were positive. It was, they were short and to the point. Make a long story short, they approved the variance, and we built our second story. I really didn't prepare an awful lot. I thought I was going to be the only one here. I'm on the ballot for the election this year, and being a skilled tradesman, I learned to change with the times. I started out working on machinery that was built in the 1920s, and now we have CNC. Everything is computerized. And last year after I retired, I was invited to teach at the Ford UAW Technical Training Center, so I spent some time down there training people from in their 20s into their 60s. Some guys waited, some ladies waited 40 years to get an apprenticeship. And so I was able to help them. I always did like to help apprentices. And, um, so I was able to help them. I always did like to help apprentices. And I think that if I were a member of this council, that I've learned to get along with people and fit in, then I think I could fit in and, and hopefully, uh, help with any decisions that needed to be made. I don't know it all, uh, but I'm, uh, one thing I, I can do is learn, and I can learn how to get along with others here. I don't know what this job all entails. But I don't think anybody that's here is not much different than a little over twenty years ago. You all seem like real nice people, and, and, um, hopefully, I could fit in with everybody and help, help run the city and, uh, and, uh, get a lot of things done. It's running very well now, so I think all you have to do is put a little grease on the wheels and just keep it running. Now, after I leave here, I'm going to think of a million things, but I can't think of anything else right now. And I got my five-year-old granddaughters waiting, and, uh, I read her a bedtime story every night. I got this book of five-minute bedtime stories. Does anybody have any questions? Anybody want to know anything?
No. Thank you for coming.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for listening.
You know, that, that council twenty years ago, there sure were a lot of nice people on there.
Yourself included?
I've heard that. Okay, so, that's, that's Debbie, Doug, Christian, Brendan, Rich, and Terry. Again, thank you all for coming and taking your time to come in. We very much appreciate it. Very impressive presentations. And, um, you've all got very interesting and impressive life stories, I would say. So, those are the presentations. Now, we go on to discussion. Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first off, I want to thank all six people who, uh, applied and, and showed up today. Five in person and one via video. All of us sitting here have been in your position before, running for office. This is a, a unique, uh, time in our, in our, um, uh, where we're, we're this close to an election, and we have, we have, have a vacancy. I've gone, you know, since, uh, Councilmember Bavacqua resigned and, and the mayor and Leanne announced the process for this, I've gone back and forth a hundred times in my head. Um, the, my first thought, uh, which I've spoken with other council members on, and was that, you know, it's, it's July. We appoint somebody in August, and the election's in November. Do we need, it's pretty close. Could we continue to run council without filling this vacancy? Why, but I think that. One, as we heard, three of the six people presenting, Debbie, Doug, and Terry, are on the ballot. Um, my feeling, whether right or wrong, my, my, my personal feeling is that if we appoint one of the people on the ballot, it gives them sort of a head start to the campaign that others also on the ballot might not have. Uh, so that was the first thing that went, went through my head. Secondly, then I said, okay, maybe there's others who are not on the ballot, Christian, Brendan, and Rich, who, you know, could fill in for this, whatever period it's going to be, five or six meetings, and get us to, you know, where, where, where the, where the election is, which still is an option in my head. But my bottom line is, we're six members. Uh, we're elected by, uh, the residents. All of us were, were elected to, to this office. And we represent the thirteen thousand-plus residents of Rochester. But I like the voters picking who goes on city council. And, and that's what I keep coming back to. And, and again, if, if, if tonight, we, uh, are in a position where we have to select one of the six, you know, so be it, or in a future, or a next meeting, I don't know what, what the, what the protocol is, Mayor, that, uh, Leanne and, um, our city attorney have come up with. But ideally, despite the wonderful presentations and all the work everybody's put into the, these, these presentations, uh, I'm not against holding the position open until the voters can make the decision in November. Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson.
So, um, thank you, Mark, for bringing that up. Um, that was one of my thoughts as well, uh, moving forward. But I want to first thank everybody who has come forth, those who have called, and sharing your desire to sit here, because I think it's very important that we all know where you come from, um, just like we did at one time. So, um, the only difference is, is, yes, I have a hard time with the ballot being the issue. But I do, however, feel that we should have that seat filled. Because in case there's ties, in case there's anything, we have that other body. Not only that, we have some very important things coming up. And we have a couple really qualified people who have sat in positions that could help us make some good decisions as well, moving forward, and, and actually operate as a full council instead of sitting here with the six on six, I mean, three on three. I think it would be, um, best for us to have a full council moving forward, even though it's a short period of time. We do have a lot of things on the agenda coming forward. Um, I, I do love that we have some people who have already had so much of a vested interest in the community and showed that work and, and demonstrated that they could, um, do this role moving forward without much guidance, because they have really worked in different areas of the community already and have given forth that time. So, I would, I would like to move forward with, um...
Councilmember Peterson. I, I guess, maybe let, before we...
No, no, I'm not going to do that.
Okay.
No, I wasn't going to. No, I, I'm just saying that I would like to move forward with choosing somebody this evening. So, we do have a full council. I think it's in the best interest of our community for a couple of reasons. Other than that is, we already know that we are lacking administratively. We have those things. I think we need this body to be complete moving forward. And I think that's the direction that we should go. Thank you.
Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming and presenting this evening. This was so helpful for us to be making this decision. I, um, want to encourage you, if you're not selected. We have openings on our boards and commissions, too. And I feel like that is the ideal place to get a start, if you want to be more involved in the city, uh, because of the Bavacqua's move. We actually have an opening on the City Beautiful Commission right now, where we will need, um, those boards and commissions. Those, those seats need to be filled as well. And I think that that is a really good way to get more involved. I was so excited to see the interest on this council seat and want to see that same interest and enthusiasm in the boards and commissions. I also agree with Councilmember Albrecht's point. I think that we are very close to the election, and it's always best to let our voters decide. But I, my question is for Mr. Attorney Krot. If there's any, uh, need to be filling this position right now by law, are there repercussions if we don't? Can we wait?
Mr. City Attorney.
Well, I will pretend that my mic is working, but it does not appear to be. So, I'll just talk louder. So, your charter does say shall, uh, the city council shall fill the position within sixty days of the vacancy. And, um, there, as far as the repercussions, if you don't, there is no set forth violation of the charter. Uh, it would be, you know, certainly, they, you know, no one can force you to select somebody. It could be a, it could be a tie, three-three, right? I mean, it could be, uh, but there is a charter statement that says the city council shall. So, that's, I guess that's all the, the guidance I can give you.
Your attorney.
Councilmember Peterson.
By them, because shall usually means that you must. It has to happen.
So, so shall, uh, back in the day meant must. And so, the court system has, now, uh, going to the shall means may. So, when this was adopted...
To the Supreme Court.
Don't enter logic into those words.
Okay.
Um, but the, uh, the, so when the charter was adopted, shall, I believe, meant shall, which was mandatory. In today's, if it was something that was brought before, I think there's a real concern that it would be interpreted, um, may. So, that goes to, I guess, maybe the, uh, to, uh, your, your point about what the consequence is. If it's deemed to be, or interpreted to be permissive, then there wouldn't be any consequence or risk for not following through with that. So, it is, that isn't, that is a very current topic, a very odd discussion.
Further discussion by the council. Councilmember Peterson.
I'd like to make a motion.
Uh, yeah, I think, I think it's just, if you want to nominate somebody, you can.
Um, I would like to make a motion to, um, have Christian Howser fill that seat for two months.
Uh, Miss, Madam Clerk? So, just, is it kind of like the city council, uh, mayor, mayor pro temp election?
I think so. I think that's, that's what we discussed, is that nominations would be held, and then, at the end of nominations, voting for them in order that they were nominated.
Okay. Any other nominations? Councilmember Albrecht.
Again, not changing where I, where, where, where my initial thoughts were. I would like to put the name of Richard Kenzick in, as a nomination, as a nominee.
Okay, so, before we vote, does anybody else want to say anything? Okay, I will just make the statement that I guess I also, with Mr. Albrecht, think that, with there only being a few meetings to go before, um, I would prefer to have the voters decide. Um, so, any, any negative vote I will make would be based on that, not based on the individual. I just want that.
And if I could just backtrack, Your Honor. I guess, under the circumstances and under this appointment process, there is no precedent or requirement that city council handle it any certain way. So, I guess my comment to how we fill this like the mayor may, may not be.
Right, so...
Council has the choice to fill this or, or handle this.
But that, that's the procedure we'll do. We'll, we'll, we'll go, and if there's votes, if there's four votes, and remember, now it takes four votes for it to pass. Councilmember Albrecht.
Um, I know, I made a motion. Uh, could, could we, based on what City Clerk O'Connor just stated, could we vote instead on whether we want to fill this position or not? And then, precludes us voting on both Christian and Richard. And again, my, my vote or not vote is not on the candidates. I think all six people did an outstanding job. My vote is on the principle of, I, I, the principle that voters make the decision. And I know we are elected by the voters, but in this one, I'd rather let the November election do it. So, I, I'd like to make a motion that we vote before we look at this, whether this council would like to fill this temporary appointment or not. If I've worded that correctly, Council City Clerk O'Connor?
Yeah, there's, so there's, there's three, three options.
So, do we need a second? Because that's a motion.
Yes, sure.
Yeah, so I'll second that motion. I think that process is appropriate.
Okay, so, is that correct?
Was Mr. Albrecht's motion to not decide?
No.
Because he just asked the question.
That city council votes whether or not we are going to appoint a person to fill this vacancy for the duration of the, of Councilmember Bavacqua's term. Yes or no? If we vote yes, that we're going to do that, then we will consider these other two candidates. If we vote no, then we don't.
I think, I think your motion needs to say what side, because...
Okay. Uh, I, I, I make a motion that we not fill the position by city council appointment for the duration of ex-councilmember Bavacqua's term.
Okay, so that's a motion by Councilmember Albrecht.
Support.
Support by Mayor Pro Tem Salvia. Discussion, Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you. I had made a motion first, though, and I did not get asked to take that motion off the table.
But it was, it was a nomination, so...
Oh, okay, okay. Well, I had said motion, though, and the mayor changed it, so I didn't say, change it to that.
Well...
Well, no, it's fine. I just, you know, I'm going to just... I, we are elected by the people to make a decision here, okay? And that decision is to, it's not taking away any residents' right at all. We have those taken away from us just sitting here sometimes. So, I think that in the best interest moving forward, with everything that we have going on, we have somebody here to fill that spot in case there is a tie or anything else moving forward. We have major, um, discussions moving forward. I don't know, I would like to know why we don't want to fill that besides the reason of the voters doing that, because the two people nominated so far have been people who are not on the ballot. So, that doesn't, to me, interfere with anyone voting for the people, the people voting for the person to fill that seat in November. It actually helps us smoothly move into that come November.
Further discussion on the motion.
Can you restate the motion before we vote?
I believe, um, it is to not fill the vacancy left by, and the unexpired term left by, um, the resignation of Councilmember Dean Bavacqua through November eighth of twenty twenty-one.
Thank you.
Also, one last time, further discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson? No. Sage?
Yes.
Of course.
Okay, so the motion passed that we are not going to fill the seat. Is that...
That was the motion.
Yep. Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Thank you. I just, I just wanted to thank all the candidates and the applicants that came forward. Um, it takes a lot of courage. It takes a lot of guts to, you know, put your name out there, to come to a meeting, to step forward. And personally, you know, in my heart of hearts, I would, I would love to see all of you in these seats. Um, and so, this was a very, you can tell by the feelings in the room, this was a very hard decision. Um, I, I, it is just too short of a timeframe, and I just want the voters to make the decision. But thank you, and get involved, and stay involved. Thank you.
Mr. Howser, would you like to say something? Can you, can you come up to the...
Of course I can. Yes, sir. I, I'm going to be quite candid. I have to say I'm incredibly frustrated at the process. And the frustration stems from you solicited invitations for people to submit their application for this seat. People spent time. They spent their effort. They spent their energy to do something only to have that whole opportunity taken away. And I guess the fundamental issue that I have is, if that's how it's going to be, then don't ask. Don't solicit people to sign up for city council or any other board and then to give it the thumbs down, say, "We're not even going to take that opportunity." And I'm a little frustrated, too, because, and no disrespect, Jeff, I've always understood shall. It's not optional. You do it. That's why you have the charter. And if you're not going to follow the charter, then why follow any ordinance? Why follow any rule? Why follow any policy? And I get it, and I understand it is close to an election, but I don't think that, that should have any bearing, because this is a temporary spot. No one who gets that seat is going to be here after November third unless the voters on November third say, "Who puts us in that seat?" So, I appreciate it, and I recognize it's not personal. I'm just frustrated at the process. And I think, moving forward, there ought to be a real review and analysis as to how this situation is avoided in the future, because it may. And if it happens again, I think you're going to see less people want to come and try and do this, only to be said, "Hey, thanks for showing up. Thanks for filling everything out, but we're not even going to vote on this, and have a great day." So, that's all I have to say about that. I will continue to support the city. I will continue to be its biggest cheerleader. But at the end of the day, that whole thing that just happened here was incredibly frustrating. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Mr. Tesh?
Yeah.
Boy, were we invited here if we're not going to be considered. Doesn't matter if we're on the ballot or not. Period. Some years ago, wasn't there a former police officer, Rochester Police Officer that was, that filled in?
Dave Zemans.
When the council member was no longer on the council?
But, but there was two years on that term.
So what, two years, two weeks, two months? Still the same. We're not going to get any big boost. I'll be lucky if I get elected. I ran twice before and ran far behind everybody else. I didn't put an effort into it. But I'm going to put an effort into it this time. I think that that's wrong, not to consider everybody that was invited here. If you didn't want us, then why invite us?
Thank you.
Actually, just leaving you, but I want to thank you all for the time. You have a wonderful night.
Yeah, just in response to Mr. Hauser, I mean, I understand how he feels. I, I will say when the process started, I had every intention of considering people and appointing them. But when, when I worked through the process, that's how I came to that conclusion. So it's not, was not taken lightly on my part. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you. So, Madam Clerk, our charter, if I recall, since we went through this before, as I was one of those people that came before us to fill a seat as well. Normally, our charter does say that the person who has the next amount of votes is the one who sits in that seat.
Actually, it does not.
Does not say that.
It's changed.
It never said that.
It's not changed. It, it had, the charter has never had a process in place.
So it was just what was written back then that, okay, so they did it that way back then?
The council back then made that choice because it was only two months after a local election that, that Mayor Kachula, former Mayor, Councilmember resigned. So that, that was the process they chose back then. You're choosing a different process now, and there's nothing in writing that says you have to do it one way or the other, or option three or four.
Oh, myself and Mayor Dalton also were running for a seat and for that same, same situation. So it has taken place before where people have been filled for that. And I do have to say that we had plenty of time in the last meeting to have a discussion about this before coming here and wasting everyone's time. Because to me, it is a waste of time. We asked people to come forth with their best efforts of wanting to fill a seat, knowing it was temporary, okay, for two months. And then we, we end up doing this to them. I would not, and I wouldn't even want to do anything here based on the behaviors of us here today. Because to me, it's not right. We are not treating people fairly, equally, and, and nice at all, okay? Because we're letting our own personal thoughts get in the way of what is best for this community. And we have 13,000 people that we're supposed to be representing, and now we don't know what's going to happen moving forward, besides the fact that we have a faction going on already. And so we have, four votes are always going to be taking place, so I guess it's a mute point. But it looks bad that we're sitting here until November with the administration, that we don't have full people in all positions. We don't have a full person here. When is this going to stop? This is horrible leadership. It's embarrassing. Just as embarrassing as it is for the Rochester Community Schools to go through what they're doing right now. And I'm tired of this. Either we come together to do what's right for the community, or we find something else and everyone gets voted out come the elections, so we can have people in here that will go ahead and represent everybody fairly and equally. Thank you.
Okay. Now we'll move on to item five, approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes of July 12th meeting.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage.
Changes. There were changes made because the vote for myself was not accurate in the minutes.
Under item 10B.
Yes, ma'am.
I was going to note that before the vote, that I had heard from Councilperson Peterson that there needed to be a correction, so there is one.
Okay, so is that correction made?
Yep.
Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is the approval of the consent agenda. First is a consideration of a special event application from the Pink Creek Center for the Arts to hold the Art and Apples Festival in the municipal park on September 10th through September 12th. We have a representative here tonight. Next, we have a consideration of a special event application from Dinosaur Hill Nature Preserve to hold Roll in Rochester Bike Ride Event on Sunday, September 19th, starting in parking lot one. Next is a consideration of a special event application from the Children's Heart Foundation to hold the Congenital Heart Walk Detroit in the municipal park on Saturday, September 18th. Next is a consideration of a special event application from Advocate to hold the Advocate 5K and 10K Run starting in the municipal park on Saturday, August 7th. Next is consideration of a special event application from the Rochester PSD to hold Rochester Posed Downtown on Thursday, October 7th. Next is a consideration of a special event application from the Rochester PSD to hold the Downtown Trick or Treat Event Downtown on Saturday, October 16th. Next is a consideration of a special event application from the Rochester PSD to hold Lanyup Downtown on Monday, November 22nd. Christmas is right around the corner. And H is review of the current 2021 event calendar. Counsel.
No moves.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by the Mayor Pro Tem. Discussion, Councilmember Albrecht.
I just wanted to welcome back Arts and Apples.
Yes.
Well, really not, because I spend too much money, but I'm glad, I'm glad that our director is here, Beth Chilton. And we all missed Arts and Apples tremendously last year, as, as, as many of the other ones on here, but especially the, I think you said in your application, Beth, it's a world-class event, and it truly is. You know, Ann Arbor has their art festival, and others have their art festival. I always look forward to Arts and Apples, and I will be there. So.
Beth, would you like to say a quick word? You don't have to, you don't have to?
You don't have to.
Okay, you don't have to. Okay, yeah, I think Arts and Apples, Lanyup, all that's a good sign, so hopefully that's all back. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. There is no old business or table items. There is no public hearings, legislative deliberation. First is a consideration of ordinance amendment to the city's Chapter 32 offenses, section 32 through 248 regarding loitering. Second reading and adoption.
No moves.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Discussion, Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is a consideration of ordinance amendment to the city's Chapter 32 offenses, section 32, 371, regarding nitrous oxide. Second reading and adoption.
No moves.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. No nitrous oxide tonight. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
And thirdly, is a consideration of the ordinance amendment to the city's Chapter 32 offenses, section 32, 480, regarding the controlled substances. Second reading and adoption. Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, onto reports and regular business. First, our mail, our appointments of city council members to boards, commissions, and committees. This is usually done at the beginning of the new term, but we have a couple of things that Councilmember Bavacqua is coming off. So I'd like to, and there's meetings coming up, I would like for the tree committee to appoint Councilmember Sage, and to the budget committee, Mayor Pro Tem Salvia. And then there's a city council appointment for members of board commission for the planning commission. Appointment.
So I'd like to be consistent with the decision that we just voted on regarding the council, open council seat. And I, I think the term is too short for planning commission to be reappointed.
If I may, and I'll.
Ms. Madam Clerk?
But I believe that a councilperson appointed to this spot would serve until the end of their term. So as long as it wasn't you or Sage, that, that's just, I wanted council to know that. So it would serve until the end of the term.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes. You know, Mayor, I didn't get a chance to reach out to you, but I would like to fill that spot. Because I've been there, and I am the only master citizen planner, councilperson ever at the city of Rochester.
This is a city council appointment?
No, I know. It is. But I'm letting you know as the mayor.
Any further? Councilmember Albrecht.
I'm on the infrastructure committee already. I think facilities goes hand in hand, so if you're looking for an appointment, I would like to serve on both, on that one if it's available.
Okay. I, I would appoint Councilmember Albrecht to the facilities committee.
And Mayor, I would like to ask, since we only have six people now, I am not on any of those committees besides facilities. Isn't that interesting?
You're on the sister city committee with me, right?
That's, that's not a committee that is part of our actual agenda items, that are making budgetary decisions and things like that.
Only the full council is making budget decisions, not subcommittees.
And then, but I think we've gotten away with this here on the subsidies quite poorly, because then we don't get a chance, as all councilpeople, as the elected officials of the city, by the residents, to go ahead and speak on items. And everything comes here with the rubber stamp from those committees. And it's still voted on with the four votes that you always have, Stuart. Mayor Bixson?
I think the four people, one, I don't know what you're talking about. Two, it comes to city council for final decisions, who are all elected by the people.
Mm-hmm. But we are not, as elected officials, part of those conversations publicly. Those committees are not meeting publicly.
Yes, sir.
Out of order.
Oh, okay. Well, yes, they're publicly, but not on line for the public. Budget committee isn't. Finance, those meetings are not public.
Councilmember Harrison?
Mayor, I just want to make sure I understand. You're looking for council to recommend or nominate someone to serve on these three committees to fill Councilmember Bavacqua's seat.
So right now, so.
Sorry.
So the, I've made the my own appointment, so the only thing that was up there was a city council appointment to the planning commission. And Mayor Pro Tem Salvia has said that, her opinion is that it shouldn't be filled. But it, that's, that's where that is. And if there's not, not a motion, then we'll move on.
So that's the only seat that needs to be filled right now? Can we think about this a little bit more? I'm sorry, and, and table this for, for next time?
Absolutely. So, Madam Clerk, we'll just table that to the next meeting. Okay, next we have the quarterly financial report and fiscal year 2022 budget amendments. Is that Anthony? All right, Anthony.
Mayor, hello. Thank you, council. I have before you the regular quarterly report. What's going to be different on this one is we are now at the year end. So there's just a few things I wanted to touch on and call to everybody's attention tonight. And Brian, can I get sharing on, on the Zoom, please?
Yes, I will give it to you.
Thank you.
Okay, you should have it.
In the council packet, it would be Sage 98. In the packet, I pulled this right up from the packet, these are the budget amendments that are being requested. As you can see, all of the ones that are being requested are a roll forward. So these are items that were identified. We sat down with the city manager wing, and we went through with the DPW foreman and the assistant director before we left to go through all the different projects and identify which ones we needed to slip to DPW. Even the process of doing an RFP, working on it, but hasn't been completed yet. So this is the list mainly all from DPW, as well as administration requesting these all be rolled forward into the current fiscal year. And as normal for any of these that have not been finished with the RFP yet, they will come back because of their amounts, which I put on the first lines here. They, they come back to council for approval on the RFPs before it's authorized for spending. So that is, is there any questions on the amendments? Otherwise, I'll jump into the next. There's two other things.
Sorry, I'm really struggling here.
Yeah, we're, we're having some technical difficulties, Anthony. So.
Okay.
Can you just wait one moment?
Sure. Is it sound or what's the?
Sound.
Yeah.
Lot of static.
Is that better if I'm not sharing?
No.
No, we're having some at this end, I think.
No, it's been happening.
There we go.
Should we, should we have Anthony do it again? Anthony, can you go through that again? We were having some interference, if you don't mind.
Oh, geez.
Whoops.
Because I don't know what goes through the feed to the public.
Yeah, I don't either. I'm sure, there we go. Anthony, can you hear me now?
We can't hear you.
I'm okay here. Static, good?
Yeah, now we're good, I think. So if, we, I apologize, we really couldn't hear your presentation because of static. So let's try again. Thank you.
I, I will summarize that quickly. I have three items I wanted to bring forward to council tonight, and, and feel free to talk over me if it starts going to static again. This page here, these are the amendments, meeting with city manager wing and the foreman for DPW, and getting kind of a status of where all the projects were that had not been completed yet, whether they had already been bid, waiting for any responses, getting ready to be bid. A few of these are combining two years of funding into one project across fiscal years. So we only have to pay the mobilization fee one time to get more work completed at a lower cost. That's what's before you tonight. So these, these are items that had been approved and put in the budget in the prior year, and we're just rolling them forward into the current year. So I will pause there, and if there's any questions or if city manager wing wanted to make any comments as well on this.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you. Anthony, you mentioned, I know these have rolled forward. Do these then come before council again for us to approve, or have they been approved from the prior year and just go forward?
So this is the appropriations to say that we're going to put it into the budget. All of the ones that are above the city manager's authority, they, they have to come to council for approval. So take like the park paths, for instance, or the, the seat, you know, some of these other projects here that are, that are above, those come to council once they're ready to be awarded for approval on whether or not to go forward.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. And the only ones that wouldn't, like, for instance, just real quick, like the sidewalks, that was already approved. Oak Street was already approved. So that was already were bid, already approved. It just, the expenses aren't going to incur in the fiscal year that just passed. So, so those we would not see again. in the fiscal year that just passed. So those we would not see again.
So it's a mix.
Councilmember Peterson.
And in the multi-year plan, at the end of the period, this is just money that was not spent in the prior fiscal year, that is, that would be in this fiscal year. So it doesn't change that ending quarterly balance number in the funding.
Councilmember Peterson, do you have a comment?
I do. I would just like to know, though, since I brought up that wage and compensation study that wasn't spent a year ago, how soon are city manager, are we looking to be able to get back on that to get that moving forward?
We're accepting proposals, and I'm hoping at our next agenda to have a recommendation for council.
Lot of head nods, but didn't know about it. Thank you. All right.
What is that supposed to mean, Councilmember Peterson? It seems like it's a little out of line.
No, it's not.
Okay. Okay. Anthony, are you done?
All right. I will jump forward. There's just a quick COVID update. This is all in the packet. This is where we're currently sitting at at year end. I'm updating them throughout the month, but I'm giving the city manager wing that the reports monthly as things have been kind of calmer. We're doing them on the every month end now. So this is the latest one to match with the fiscal year. Nothing surprising here that parking fund is the largest hit on this. And as of Michigan Treasury's posting news earlier today, March is the deadline for the ARP option, whether you want to spend the money, give the money to the state, or give money to other communities. We had filled ours out on the very first day that they were accepting it. So we have met that timeline. They still, as of now, earlier today, have not given any method or application process or anything on actually requesting dollars yet. So we will continue to keep council up to date on when we can actually, when they're going to start setting those dates on being able to request the funding, which for the city, from the American Rescue Plan Act, is 1,391,673. So we will keep you up to date as that goes. Last thing I wanted to touch real quick on related to this with the parking fund here is that, you know, on the good news side, the last few months, we are hovering down to about, only to be about 10% down from where we were pre-COVID. If council remembers, obviously, during the shutdown, we were 100% down. And then we had bounced back through the various openings and closings, you know, 30%, 40%, 20%, bouncing around. But now we're leveling off right around 10%. About 150,000 a year for the parking fund, if that continues, you know, only had about two and a half months of it getting back down to 10%. So we're still waiting to see if that's going to hold at 10, if that's the new kind of model we need to start forecasting around. But we do have a PAC committee meeting that's working on being scheduled sometime in the next couple of weeks, I believe, depending on if we can find a scheduled time. So we'll have more for council after that as well. And that is, we'll open up to questions or comments. That's all I wanted to make sure to bring forward to council's attention at this time.
Thank you. Anthony, questions? Councilmember Peterson?
Yes. So regarding the parking fund, so recently I have encountered quite a few conversations regarding economic development losses to our community due to the parking fund and what it is doing for businesses who are trying to relocate within our city due to the way the use is. So when this first started, this was to start to help us build a base to get that moving forward. And then we were supposed to find a way to make it work without having to continually take money from business owners or from the DDA. And so now that we have moved forward and taken care of a lot of this loss and the parking is coming back, the only way that we are going to become, get to full use is if we bring economic development back to downtown and allow these businesses that want to transfer to be able to do so without this parking and lieu that we have continually sent them running from. Because for one business to come into town that wanted to redo a building, it was $600,000 that they would have to pay just in parking and lieu to make this work. These parking structures were built so we could have parking downtown and alleviate that. And that parking and lieu was prior to these parking structures because we had parking on the street. That's how they did that back then. We're way past that. And I feel moving forward, we need to find a way to change this, to bring these developers back into the community to bring economic development that would actually pay for these, and they should be self-funded by then, or should have already been by now if we would have had that not sitting there stopping this development. And it's been stopping it for the past five years that I have been trying to bring development here as well of, or in hearing of people who have wanted to. So I think that's, you know, I don't know what the solution is at this point if no one's going to get on board to champion this, but we can't continue trying to do that. We're going to continue losing good business to our downtown. Thank you.
Okay, further questions for Anthony? Mayor Protem Salvia.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Director Maggio. As usual, these reports provide council and the public great transparency around where we're at, specifically the impacts of COVID upon the city. I'm happy to hear about parking coming up because it sure does seem like a lot more people are in town. The parking structure seems to be full because events are app, are open and happening, and restaurants are open. So it's really great to see that. I didn't have any additional questions, but I do look forward to hearing more about parking, specifically the replacement of the meters. I noticed in here there was $29,000 for parts. I think we had, at a previous meeting, talked about $300,000 to update the system. So that's 10% just in this time period. I also saw an article that another community has just put in a new parking system that reads the license plates versus having to fill meters. And they did that to reduce the amount of staffing required as well as maintenance. The downside was they lost 40 parking spots, I believe it was Royal Oak. So again, look forward to hear more about parking. Parking's always a topic in Rochester. And also understand the roll forwards and the request to make the budget, budget amendment. So I make a motion to approve the multi-year budget amendments as presented.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Protem Salvia, support by councilmember Peterson. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Anthony.
You, council.
Next is a request to spend $61,165 on Parks Path within the municipal park. Mayor, Mr. City Manager?
Yep, I'm happy to take this. And we also do have our superintendent from Public Works here as well. As part of the pull forward money is actually combining some of our dollars that were budgeted in this fiscal year, along with some of those that you were just approved just prior to this from our last year. This will allow us, in our packet here, there's actually a small map indicating on page about 115 in the packet, the location of the Park Path that would be updated. As Anthony noted during the previous discussion, this allows us to reduce the mobilization and actually capitalize with the same vendor to, to do more work at one time. So tonight, we're asking for $61,165 to update a portion of our Parks Path in the municipal park. And although not required in this, there's the possibility of some contingency due to some of the water issues that we do in certain areas experience in the park. That amount, the 6,000, is within my authority. So tonight, we're just asking for, and I'm trying to honor council's past discussion on just setting a set amount. And if we do need to get in contingency, we would do that. So tonight, we're asking for the award of $61,165 to Bowen Paving for this work.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. City manager wing, obviously, I would support this. My question, though, is of the remaining path infrastructure there, where, where are we at next year?
Yep. So we actually looked at this. If we did about 100,000 over the next, so we get an estimate and actually do the whole work, it's about $1 million. So to actually maximize, and we're actually, when we're going through to do this, we're widening the actual path and making it out of a thicker material so that our vehicles from Public Works can actually go through. So the 61 is this particular area. So we're about, this would get us to about 25% done. And so we do have several more years on that long-term Parks Master Plan to actually complete the full path.
So would CDBG funds ever qualify for this?
Yep, we, we actually did discuss that. Yes, this is the last portion within the city that it was eligible for. However, since the newer changes and us trying to make our front entrance, at this time, what we've presented with the CBDD dollars has been the ADA accessibility, adding a component that would have the push buttons along with a vestibule component up in the front. I would suspect in the future, more dollars would be here. We've also applied for various grants as well. And so we now have this all planned. And over the next number of years, instead of just taking a $1 million hit, we're systematically going through this.
Thank you.
Is that a motion, Councilmember Sage?
I will make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Sage, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Discussion, Mayor Protem Salvia.
Actually, a question, question for Jason. So I understand part of this work helps the DPW accessibility. But is part of this going to be covering over currently cement pathways with asphalt?
No, it'll be completely removal, aggregate base, and then do asphalt on top.
But part of the pathway that's currently cement is now going to be?
Actually, none of this current path is cement. It's all asphalt.
Okay, I'm good then.
So this is, continue on from, former council member is on the seats just behind the skating shelter. We're starting there and heading out to the new route. And the accessibility part is for North Wilcox. We're going to make that a connector road path combination so that we can get through for leaves and plowing. And then you guys just heard about all the events going on in the park. That path is in poor condition, so.
Yep, I know that. Yep. Good.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Sage?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Next are reports from various boards and commissions. First receive a report from the principal shopping district, Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to thank council for approving the event requests proposed by the PSD this evening. We're excited to have all of the events back in the community, especially Lanyup. So it's great to see those on the calendar, and thank you for your support on that. We have been talking holidays. It's like Christmas in July already. We have the Neighborhood Light Fight was a huge success last year. We'd like to do it again. We also talked about a miracle pop-up bar, Pancake and Pajamas fundraiser, and 12 Cookies of Christmas. 12 Cookies of Christmas would be brand new this year. It's still in the works and being discussed. So it was a productive event overall. And if, if I may, if there are questions on the PSD?
Councilmember Peterson?
No.
If I may just mention, the City Beautiful Commission, we did not meet officially this, this past month, but we did meet unofficially at the Dog Wash fundraiser to raise money for our native plant gardens around the community. That was a huge success with over $600 raised. And I feel, I feel like 600 dogs, but I'm not sure exactly. But thank you to all of council for coming out and supporting that as well.
Very good. Thank you. That was a fun event. Next receive a report from the Rochester Avon Recreation Authority, RAR, Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. We didn't have a June meeting, but we did have our July 13 meeting. And all members were present. However, our executive director, earlier in the week, had requested, or earlier in the month, excuse me, had requested a leave of absence. So he did not attend. The full board was there. We approved some salary increases for two members based on a compensation study that was done retroactive to January 1. We needed to do that through the RAR board as per Rochester Hills CFO and city council. We also talked about the sign on, for the 480 Building. As you know, the 480 Building is where we have our new vendor coming in that is, was, is opening up shop there. They moved from Rochester Hills. They're called AFS. And so that sign was approved by the city prior to the meeting. So now we'll just be having that installed shortly. Great news is that the activities are really ramped up. Last summer with COVID, we had good success with the outdoor activities, again, limited to masks and such. But now we booked our first indoor birthday party, first one in 18 months. And so all, all of the recreation supervisors, our music, excuse me, our dance director, Bernie, is stepping down. She'll stay on in a part-time capacity. So we hired a new person, Liz, who used to be a dance instructor there. We were all able to meet her, and we'll be meeting again in August. That's it, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Yes.
What is the business? You said the initials are AFS. What do they do?
I knew you were going to ask me.
It was acronym.
Applied Fitness Solutions.
Yeah. They, they used to be over behind Home Depot and that whole area.
Yeah.
And they're moving it, which is great news because it'll generate additional revenue, which increases over the years. So, which will help us address some of our capital issues we have at the both facilities.
We're good. Now, a report from the Tree Committee, Councilmember Albrecht?
We had a, let me get to which, which Tree Committee was. Apologize, I was right here. Okay, so we had a special meeting on July 13. And this was really, speaking on behalf of Mayor Protem Nancy Salvia, this was really where we, we felt that we did some good work here versus having a citizen come before city council. So this is truly where a committee representing city council was able to get things done. Councilmember Bavacqua's, you know, again, was not there, but our other two residents, Melissa and Bill Thomas, were there. We basically had a resident who had illegally removed a couple of trees, long-term resident. He was able to speak to the committee. We came up with a solution that was agreeable by all of us on the committee unanimously, proposed by Nick Banda. What was going to happen is this resident will plant two trees in the Howitt Park, which is also his grandfather. The park is named for his grandfather. So we thought it was a very good solution. And as we said, the Tree Committee is not there to make money. We're there to preserve and protect the tree canopy. Speaking of the tree canopy project, we finally had a, the tree canopy surveyed. We had outsourced this to a group, and we, our coverage is 30%. So that is our baseline. They will redo this every five years officially, but each year we can, using this initial data report, which is taking 1,000 different data points from throughout the city. So now we have a baseline. The old days, you would take a map, and you would do it like square inches and figure it out. So this was all more technical, technically advanced. So we've got our baseline, just like when you go to the physical, you know what your blood pressure is and cholesterol and all those other things. We now know that the tree canopy for Rochester as of July of 2021 is 30%. So I'll get to you in a second. So that was good news that we had that. And then finally, we have talked about our citywide tree planting project that we presented to council a few months ago, where we're going to plant 100 trees. The tree bait program was talked about. It's out there. We haven't had a lot of residents take advantage of it yet. So we have decided to take some of those trees that we would have used for residents, and if they come forth, we still have plenty of trees left over, to create a buffer around the community garden. So again, adding to our tree canopy. Councilmember Sage, and then Councilmember Harrison. I know, sorry, Mayor.
So it's encouraging to hear that we have a baseline on the canopy. So that as more than a data point, can it be considered a metric if we consider? So that as more than a data point, can it be considered a metric if we consider we're 3.5 square miles? Is there any measurement out there for that? I mean, how do we stack up if you will?
Well, we are, we're a large urban, you know, because the downtown is covered by a lot of park, you know, streets and everything else like that. We didn't have a benchmark whether we're good, bad, or above comparable areas, you know, we have, we have, they did talk about the fact that, you know, you have a lot of, you have a downtown area that's, you're not going to grow trees on top of buildings, well, I guess you could some days.
Yes, you can.
But right now, they just, it was just a data point at this point. Councilmember Sage.
Councilmember Albrecht, will you remind our residents how they can participate in the tree planting project?
Thank you, Councilmember Harrison. What we did is, we had monies, we have monies in our tree program, and our, the monies in the tree program are just for that, they are for trees. So we had agreed that we are going to be planting trees along public areas throughout the city. That's what the city will be doing during the planting season. We also set aside money that if you, as a homeowner, want to plant a tree through the tree bait program, which can be found on the Rochester City website, it's pretty easy to find, I've already sent it to a couple residents, we will work, we've given the residents a list of nurseries they can work with, they can work with Nick Banda, our resident forester, pick a tree that works for them, and we'll rebate, we'll reimburse up to $250 or half the cost of the tree, the planting and the installation.
And can councilmembers apply?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
The fact that I lost a tree in the storm on Saturday night, I probably should apply myself.
Dean had applied. I have one other comment on the topic of trees, since we all love to talk about trees. I also spoke with one of the homeowners associations, if you recall, they had some apprehension about the changes that we were making in the ordinance as well as the committee structure. They recently submitted their normal plan, and it went through and it was approved, so they were happy that from their perspective, nothing has changed, they're able to still do the great work that they do regarding their trees, maintaining their trees and maintaining their canopy, so I was happy to hear that.
Very good.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, so City Manager Wayne, could you please make sure that I start receiving all this information again, because I did ask that for over a year ago, that I get all the information that's being sent to all the committees?
Yep, actually, some of this is tonight's presentation, I'm learning about it just as well as you are.
Okay, so I would like to have all those items that were listed, I'd like to see anything that was brought forth from today forward at all, for all meetings and committees.
As soon as I get it, I'm happy to share it, so if the committees are making the presentations here, I don't have that information yet to share, but I'm happy to pass it along as soon as administration has it.
So you haven't sat in on any of these meetings?
I have not.
Okay. Very interesting. I just, I'm very disappointed because I've asked for all this information for quite some time, and I haven't been receiving it, so as the councilperson who doesn't sit on those, and I complain about not knowing the discussions, and it comes forth that just as it just was presented again, it would be nice to know what has been taking place in the community that I represent, the residents.
I understand. My understanding is, is this is the opportunity for these committees to actually share that information.
I know, but I still want all that information.
Happy to get it to you.
Yep, I asked for that a year ago.
Next, receive a report from the Pink Creek Trailway Commission, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A few things. First, the trail is reviewing all of its licensing agreements from here to Lake Orion, so it's quite a lengthy process right now, some of them date back many, many years. One of those is a licensing agreement with a property here in town, Solar Onyx, and I know that the trail has been in contact with the owner. I guess they have a potential suitor, if you will, but are, so I guess the trail is asking, has Solar Onyx requested a zoning revision? Or if we can give them any guidance?
If not, my understanding is there's been several different possible, I guess, suitors, as you stated, so there's not been.
They brought something to the Planning Commission a few months ago, but it was just kind of ideas, and they never came back with anything concrete.
It was a concept.
It was a concept, and I don't, I don't think they purchased the property or anything, it's just this group was presenting the idea.
Okay.
So right now, there's nothing that the Planning Commission, this is before the Planning Commission.
Mr. Mayor, it's Nick, if I can help.
Thank you.
If you would like me to?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, I've met with them now four times in the last two months, and exactly how you outlined it, they have these ideas, and they haven't had any come to fruition, so of course, this age, there's no official suitor that they sign a purchase agreement with, some of them are way out there ideas, so you all will know as soon as we know there's something that gets that under contract, and I make sure they all meet with the trail commission, because they have a, the owners have a different agreement, thought process for the trail commission thing, whether they can revoke that easement or not, but we make sure they all meet together first, so we'll keep you in the loop for sure, all of you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, nothing has happened now?
Second item, we did approve a couple meetings back, an event that the trail will be holding in the park, the Labor Day Bridgewater, and the commission has asked each of the elected members from each municipality to consider if we know anybody that, business in town that would likely want to sponsor this event in any way, there are different levels of sponsorship for this event, we should pass that information on to the trail, to the trail manager directly, so. And then the last one, probably for you, Blaine, we had an air pump at the fix-it station there, right off the trail. We removed it for COVID reasons, are we going to put it back?
I will talk with our parks staff to see. I'm assuming that's for pumping up the tires?
Correct.
Yeah, I'm sure at some point.
It's the one right by the restrooms there.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll talk with our parks foreman tomorrow.
Thank you very much. That's it, sir.
Thank you. Next, done for new business, for referral miscellaneous, public comment, Brian, anything out there? Don't see any.
I've not seen any, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, so for the check register, we have the July 15th and 26th, and for the managers' update tonight, I don't have anything.
Very good. Madam Clerk?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Albrecht?
I just wanted to comment and compliment, we had the terrible weather run through the city on Saturday night. Early on, the DDA and PSD canceled the movies in the moonlight, and so I saw that on social media, and I complimented them on making that decision earlier in the day. Secondly, you know, throughout the night, besides watching all the news stations and everything else like that, seeing a post from Rochester Police Department of flooding issues and things of that sort, unfortunately, hearing the tornado siren go off near my home, you know, showed me that the process was working as it was, as it popped up on my phone and such, so I was very pleased that all the things that needed to happen did happen. And then personally, I lost a tree in the backyard that night, and I can't do much with my knees, so I had people come over and chop up the tree and take the branches to the road, and I, as I told Jason earlier in the evening, I sent in through the automatic system to pick up the branches from my public area sidewalk, and they were there at 8:30 this morning. I didn't say I was a councilmember, I just did it as a normal citizen, so I know they did it on their own, so it's just, you know, when you have things like this happen, it's good to see all forms of government, administration, working together to make sure, you know, one, nobody got hurt, and secondly, that things, our safety of our residents was paramount in everybody's decisions.
Very good. Mayor Protem Salvia?
Yes, thank you. So I'll just kind of tag on the storm situation, I just, I hadn't heard any updates, I know last time we had a storm, we've got a lot of open infrastructure going, a lot of open work. How did we fare, especially with those infrastructure projects?
Yeah, the only one that we had, some minor flooding was on Oak, and our contractors were out, police had alerted Public Works and had already been coordinating as we knew that the storms were coming through, so some minor, definitely nowhere near the last storm that we had, you know, several inches within a couple hours, so we've, compared to many other communities, we fared very well.
Okay, good, great, thank you. And then my second question I have was a question for Leanne. I had an email come through, I think, today, because I subscribe to whenever there's a muni code update, and I just like that as kind of a check to understand when those are processed, but I noticed one of them was for the tree ordinance change.
Okay.
And so we've been functioning under that for a while, so my question, and maybe we need like a flow chart so that we can understand when that gets updated and what are the triggers, so that, to understand how, if someone goes to our code, I want to make sure they're able to have the current ordinances.
Correct. I'll be happy to provide a report. We're currently under a plan where the electronic code is updated twice, biannually, twice a year.
Yeah.
But there is the option of having our ordinances loaded on there as they come about, but those still aren't electronic, if they were to go to that section, it still would not be upgraded except for biannually, but I can look, I believe we can up it to quarterly and take a look, but I haven't communicated and reached out to that company for many years, so it would probably be a good time to say, what are we able to do, what are we doing, and how we can do that more quickly.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
Okay.
I can just piggyback on that.
Councilmember Peterson?
When you do go to the muni code, it automatically tells you how many things have changed, so it does highlight that when you first open it.
Um, yes.
Correct. Just a couple things, Mayor. One, if, I don't know who's in charge of it, but on First Street, we have some lines that have a whole bunch of that ivy growing on it, and it's like really hanging down really low now, I don't know who would go out there and take that down, but I think that needs to come down because school buses and everything go on that road, and I want to thank the fire department and all those that worked there for the wonderful event that they had the other night, and how they, for the ambulance dedication, and for all their hard work and expertise with all the tools that we've given them, and them being so eager to take care of the citizens of Rochester.
Very good. Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you. The ambulance dedication was a really beautiful ceremony, I'm glad that we could recognize the hard work and learn a little bit more about what our fire department does for us in the city of Rochester, so that was nice. And then just a reminder that the master planning workshop is what, this Thursday, at the Community House.
Very good. Councilmember Sage?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Okay. Thank you, I just have a couple things. One, I also would like to thank the fire department for the ambulance dedication, and actually, we started a few minutes late because the ambulance was out on a call, so it's being used, and the officers who did it kind of came back and gave us a demonstration, so I think the equipment that we give our firefighters and our excellent firefighters really helps the safety of our city, so that's something I think we can all be proud of. I also agree that the communication with the storm was very good. I was actually out and heard the siren, I was in the car and heard it, and I saw the police going around and stuff, so I mean, it was, I think we've done a very good job with that, and you know, I guess with climate change, we're going to be seeing more and more of these, so I think that's a good thing. And then last, this is a kind of a last-minute thing, and I was telling Councilmember Albrecht about this, Great Oaks Country Club is having their 50th anniversary, August 6, I think, so I would like to have the council and maybe have the city manager kind of author something that, give a proclamation congratulating them on their 50th anniversary, and that's, bring this up late because I just found this out myself.
Will there be a party?
I think there, I think there might be. I don't know if we're all not members, but, yeah, so if we could, if I could get a motion and then have the city clerk or the city manager do the wordsmith, that'd be great.
Motion to draft a proclamation on behalf of Great Oaks' 50th anniversary?
Support.
Most of my councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Harrison. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. And if there's not any other comments, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Albrecht for toughening it out, man.
Made it.
I just have a question for you really quick. Do we have to appoint someone to planning commission before, before we find out who goes, no, I don't think there's any requirement for the appointment to planning. Okay. I was a little bit confused, and I thought it had to happen. No. But then we'd have to serve the full term of whatever our terms.
Correct.
That's why I keep the ice pack on, not the prettiest thing to look at.
Are they starting on the ass?